You do that.
About halfway. Yeah. Yeah, damn sure. No. Put it, put it, whoever's going to be. Ah, yeah, I put it. It changed running. Yeah. Yeah. You think so? We told the whole hour, working for the commissioners, work session of May the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, at two o'clock P.M. Again, with a roll called vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Aldrich.
President.
Commissioner Dixon.
President.
Commissioner Turner.
President.
Commissioner Nelson.
President.
And the chairs, President, Director, Chairman, and all the members. Let's stand for the invocation that I'll do, and Commissioner Nelson will place a flag for the plates. Almighty God, we just thank you again, oh Lord, for another day, a beautiful day, Lord, that you've given us. Lordly thank you for everything in life that you have provided for us, Lord, with love and grace most of all, Lord. And God, I ask you to be with us this day, Lord, in our meeting, in our deliberations, Lord, we just ask you to give us the words to say, let our thoughts be posted towards each and every one that's here today, oh God, and we just thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. We ask you to bless each department head in our county, and each employee, Lord, as they go forth daily to do their job, Lord. We pray, God, that they would be protected by your guardian angels, and God, that's not much to ask of you, Lord, because you love us all. And God, I thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be here today, Lord, as we carry out our deliberations, Lord, we just ask you to be with us, Lord. And I'm going to say to you, oh God, we love you, and we praise you, in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank everybody for coming. Got a lot of department heads here today, some special guests, and thank Ms. Jennifer Herzog for being here as our attorney today, and Ms. Myers, who's working on General Harold, for her pay interest and being here for us. And we get right into our agenda, which is kind of short today. Our first item on the agenda, the request to appoint, appointment to the working for family insurance services under Tab A, with the manager.
Yes, sir. There is a support letter from Ms. Catherine Casey, Director of Department of Family Insurance Services, asking to reinforce Frank's hint to another attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have this get to a table for a later date. There's information that's come up, and I think we can discuss some of the things that folks have some concerns about, and if we could just put this off to a later date.
Well, we got some time yet, six-thirty is expiration.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, y'all okay with that? I suppose on it.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Park, this is trying that item from our agenda. Okay, item two, under Tab B, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. After several meetings between the river keepers and the board, and I think they've been before us a couple of times, I think the attorney has the resolution that she's happy supporting, and that the river keepers are happy supporting, so we're sitting before you for consideration.
Madam Attorney, you want to add to that?
Just that we did that with them, and expressed our concern about that public easement language, and so we were able to come up with some language that, you know, we do support what they're doing and their efforts, but take out the concerted language, so that hopefully everybody's happy.
Okay, commissioners, y'all okay with that?
I really agree with you.
I know there's been some work done on it, and hope parties agree now, so we can move forward with that. Place that on our percentage, please, Madam Park. Item three, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Our EMA disaster debris removal and disposal proposals sent out for qualified contractors to respond, and at the recommendation of our EMA Director, Mr. Jonathan Daniel, he recommends the primary contract be awarded to Crowder Gulf, and the secondary be awarded to Serious Environment, four options to remove for two years. We have to have this to have a qualified declaration in defense of the disaster.
Yeah, thanks.
And if you have any questions.
What is our exposure to it as a county? I mean, is it mostly paid for by the federal government, or?
We don't have any exposure unless there's a notice to proceed through an event, disaster event, through a presidential declaration, or some other type of event, or where that we can't handle our part of it locally. We will initially try to handle with public works what we can do, but if that overwhelms them, then we could move it to a notice to proceed with our contractor we have on hand, and there's some pricing in there that's bound to them, that there's no money, there's just saying that we have an event, that we choose to exercise our contract, this is who we're going to do it with.
Okay, Madam Park, place that on the agenda. Okay, item four, under Tab B, commissioners, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. There's some additional local maintenance improvement grant dollars out, what we call SHORT acronym, Lamig, and at the request of DOT, and the chairman and some other commissioners in that area got some concern about the Nichols Highway, there's some lane deterioration on the approach lane going into one fifty-eight, and what's happening is, is trucks, your tractor, trailer trucks cannot make that angle, it's a bad alignment and all, and I tried to get it under what they call a quick response project with DOT, but they does not meet the criteria for a quick response, where they actually led it and incurred all the expense, but through the Lamig program, and speaking with the state aides, district state aide coordinator, he suggested we put it under Lamig, and he would put it in with our two-foot widening project that we proposed along Harris Road, to get that corridor along our sheriff's office and emergency services and all, actually four more foot of lane, two on each side, which is narrow, and it's got a lot of current geometry issues. So I put it before you all, there's an estimate, there's an alignment that was done similar and submitted in Toons County right here, if you'll see the attached drawing in your iPad documents, and it's very similar. The angular alignment is bad alignment, and to realign it and meet current geometry and the angles and speeds and all that we need to, this alignment would be proposed. We would perfect the document later with your permission, or if you agree to let this go forward, but the funding historically in Lamig is seventy-thirty, seventy percent DOT, thirty percent county. Now, this may work a little bit different, it may work along the fifty-fifty line, but they have around three or four million surplus dollars, now that's twenty-four counties submitting projects. It looks like if, it's all according to what they approve, if we have to have the decel lane approaching Nichols Highway, then it would be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars estimated. If we do not have to have the decel lane, and we can work with the current alignment and just turn in with an improved radius, then it's about eighty thousand dollars. But I need your authorization to submit it for conceptual funding. Now, we may not get it funded, what we make, but this is the only avenue that we have to really address that issue, because this is a bad issue, but it did not fit the criteria of the quick response program that I didn't agree with, but obviously, I'm not controlling the purse either. But this is the best avenue I see of fixing that issue, because they're cutting across, Commissioner Aldrich is very familiar with that area, I'm sure, and they're cutting across, and it's rattling out and deteriorating our lane, the quality of our lane on the approach to state route.
And the DOT feels like that'll take care of the problem, with a two-foot extension?
Well, with this, with this curb alignment and the widening and all, we'll do a little bit of widening, but we'll kill the widening just past the rumble strips and all, but it will definitely help, because you know as well as I do, there's a bad blind spot. It comes in about a forty-five degree angle, and that's an awful alignment on the state route, and, and your tractor trailers cannot make that current alignment, so what they do, there's a dirt median in there, and they just pull up short of that alignment, and then they turn onto.
Our part would be forty?
Our part would be either fifty-fifty or seventy-thirty, somewhere in that range.
On the up?
On the lower side. Well, if it's fifty-fifty, it's equal, but.
Of the eighty?
Right. Well, it's of a hundred percent. Let's just say if it, if it were a hundred thousand dollar project, traditionally, the DOT would fund seventy thousand, we could fund thirty thousand. This is sixty-forty, you know, sixty thousand, forty thousand, fifty-fifty.
I guess my point is, that takes, eighty thousand dollars takes care of a lot of, of why, and, and actually probably pretty close to a, to a turn.
And it'll, it'll actually be construction let dollars, if our estimates is high, are high, which I hope that they are upon letting, and if we tussle it up with the Harris Road widening project, we should get a better bid, because there's more work there, and it's not just this one alignment, you know, out there on a singular project.
Yeah. Any more questions? I know I had one taxpayer call at my attention two or three, four months ago, and I went out and took a picture, showed them to the manager, and that's where this is called.
Right.
He's went right to work on the.
Have you, have you gone as far as to contact the landowner in that corner right there?
Well, we think we can do it without the abutting landowners right away, just the way their alignments work. In fact, I've got a drawing, or a rough estimate of the alignment, but all that would be pre-certified upon, you know, if they approved the project, we would make sure, Mr. Rouse is the landowner, I have looked at that, he owns that corner where the telephone communication tower is, and also the farm that's adjacent to that right away in there, I've looked up that, and I've looked at reasonably where we think, you know, two rightaways above that, and I think we can do it without any impact. He's already been impacted, probably, and proof being known of what's happening right now.
Well, there've been several pretty bad accidents right there, because you just simply, if you, if you're coming east, you just simply cannot see the oncoming traffic, unless it's not, you see headlights.
That's one of the.
Just perhaps.
Three rounds. Wait, you have to pay whatever. You gotta pull off into that median and square yourself up, so you can see that right.
Well, with the three million dollars, that's the prerequisite, that you certify something that's in safety, and that two-foot widening on Harris Road, obviously, is a safety issue for the amount of traffic and all, and this is. That's right. That's the reason why I'm asking for permission to submit it as a safety project.
That would be my suggestion, and that's a very obvious path.
Y'all okay with it?
Yeah.
Let's pursue that, Mr. Manager, Madam Park, put that on the.
I just tried to get it a hundred percent.
They know that when you call, when they see your number on the.
Well, right.
Keep trying.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Mr. Manager.
All right.
Commissioners, item, Mr. Nelson, do you have an item over here?
I don't.
Say some brown data confirmation.
Oh, well, that will come into effect after the public hearing, I guess. If, if the road is renamed, I want to look at the confirmation, you know, give a mic whenever they're going to do the size and do something, you know, later on. I just ask some, just need to put that in there as a draft, and you'll turn and look at it, make sure it's a nice little document, you know, frame it up and give it to them.
Okay. You have any?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah. Yeah, I was asking, I, originally I put it down, because I told him I would, the other night, he asked about why there was not an elevator at the registrar's building that we just took over downtown. According to this gentleman, it's a state law or a federal law, there has to be one. I'm not aware of any such, that's the reason I'm bringing it up, or if there's any plans for having one.
We've got one. We, we got a temporary CEO certificate of occupancy at the facility, based on the fact that we were working with this and Krupp on the elevator. Now we have all the hydraulics, the new RAM and everything in place that meet current credentials, and meets the state elevator law, and my understanding is, is that the inspector from the state has been down now, and so we're moving forward with that, and it will be fully operable and certified, I'm going to say, within a week or so. And it potentially already is, based on the weekly report, but we've been waiting on those materials for some time. It was a retro, it's kind of a little complex deal to get it up to current standard, the old elevator did not meet the current criteria with the state law, so we should see closure within a week or so.
Well, originally he asked, there was somebody that he knew that was disabled, that couldn't get up to the second floor.
Well, that, the registrars are occupy the bottom floor.
I understand, but whatever's in the second floor.
Their inspector's office?
Yeah.
And we, we will meet that, and we were issued a temporary CEO based on that fact, and they knew that we were working with the company, that we had a contract with them, and as soon as we could get all the parts and all the stars aligned, so to speak, that we would get it operable, and, and we have, and we, and, like I said, within a week or so, it should be fully operable.
And the only other thing is, I'd like to thank the Keystone Brothers League for putting on the two forums for candidates the last two weeks. I attended both, and both of them were very informational and lightning, and thank Mr. Johnson over there for making available to you later on the internet.
Thank you.
I think, I think there's a lot of good, quite big information there.
Yes, sir.
I got, I got one item that I'd like to, Friday, you know, for some time, we have been, in short terminology, overhaul in our industrial development authority, and that's all come down to the end now. We have, we have a full board now, we met Friday at City Hall in Long Cloud, and myself, along with Mayor John Knox, has served, he's serving on the city side, I'm serving on the county side, and we have a full roster of members of the board, and I'm very excited about what's going to happen in industrial development, and we got a lot of things that's coming down the pipe, we can't talk about yet, but we are hastily working towards employment of a executive director, a lot of chairman of the board, chairman of the board will be kicked out of these eight, but the executive director will be above them, and we excited about that, we got some good quality applicants, and we're going to be taking a look at them right shortly. Appreciate it, everybody, I know it's been a long drawn-out affair getting all the paperwork changed over from OTO over to WWDA, then we had legislation that had to be changed, and all that's happened, so we're, we're headed in the right direction with it, industrial development, just takes time, and I'm excited about that.
That meeting will be, what, Wednesday? WWDA's first meeting?
No, we have, we, I don't know when the regular official meeting will be, the meeting Friday was just a meeting to everybody to get a.
I saw it.
What a really a meeting.
I saw it. No, they, they, both of them were in there. WWDA was Wednesday, because downtown is tomorrow, Tuesday.
I know, I know they were, you know, talking about setting a meeting for the local officers. Maybe what, what they're going to do, have a call meeting just for all of them.
Yeah, but they said it was open to the public.
It is, I mean, it's still open to the public, but I know they still need to, to appoint a chairman and vice chair and sort of that, I don't know. That may be what it is. I know Wednesday they have a breakfast for the industrial parts of the businesses.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Okay, Mr. Manager, anybody want to add to that? Okay. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Yes, sir. We have a guest in our audience, MSI benefits group, looking at our renewal of all the things that we said on the tight timeline, and they put together a presentation for you, Mr. John Leggett, and Ola, if you will step up with her, she's been a component unit, and also a departing unit, and a component unit in this, but we won't get into the specifics of the other subject matter, but they were shortlisted, and they come to you with a presentation today that's in your iPad data, on the benefits renewal for Ware County, and like I said, we're, we're excited to have Mr. Leggett on board with us as our benefits manager, our consultant, and all our ancillary products, and here we go.
Fifty thousand foot.
Thank you, guys. Good afternoon. First off, I'd like to say thank you so much for selecting MSI benefits, we decided to be working with Ware County, was forward to it, and as you said, we did have a short timeline, I think we're actually starting the open enrollment educational meetings next a week from today, so, well, is it, Tuesday, wait for tomorrow, I'm sorry, next Wednesday. So I'll be back next Wednesday, and Thursday, and then Monday, again, and then the actual open enrollment meetings will take place the following week, so if you have your presentation, I would like to just go through it real quickly, if that's okay. First off, I just wanted to tell you very briefly a little bit about us, I know that you're somewhat familiar with us, we're out of Kennesaw, which is, you know, north of Atlanta, about a four-hour drive, I've been down here now twice in the past couple of weeks, and as I told you, I'll be here next week and the week after that. We have over thirty-three years of experience, we've been around since the eighties, we currently work with year number forty-eight, forty-eight Georgia counties, cities, and authorities in, in Georgia. I always put on here, you know, I think it's a big deal, when you call our office and an actual person answers the phone, I know we're not the local broker, but again, we're here, we're here doing the enrollments, we're here once a month doing the new hire meetings, your employees are encouraged to call our office when they have any questions, be it a claim, a bill, benefit, whatever it is, we actually, we encourage them to call our office. And of course, as we, as I said, forty-eight government groups, we participate in all the, in ACCG, GMA, GCCMA, GLGPA, and the, and the GARC conferences every year. On slide three, this is the actual team, we don't, we're, I guess we're a little different than some brokers, we don't have assigned one account manager, I am the lead, I guess you'll say, broker consultant, and I have a team behind me that will work with Ware County and the employees, and I put the, the main focus on this slide three here, so you can just see their names and who will be responsible. On four, on slide four, I actually put on here that your claims, the county's claims, to show you, this was for 2015, if you're looking at it, you can see in the orange the total there, the county spent just over three million from January 2015 through the end of December in claims, and United Healthcare paid out just over two-point-eight million. If you factor in the pooled claims, there were seven members with claims in excess of a hundred thousand, you take those pooled claims out, it gets, gets the amount adjusted with pooling down to just over two-point-five million, so your adjusted loss ratio was eighty-three percent, and with that, with that eighty-three percent increase, our loss ratio, United Healthcare's formula that they use called for a twenty-two and a half percent increase, they actually came out with a nineteen and a half percent increase, so that will, go to the next page, on page five, based on how your claims are, and United Healthcare came out, as I said, with that nineteen-point-five percent increase. If you're looking at the bottom number there, which is the most important number, the annual net increase to the county, if we were to pass on the increase to the employees as far as keeping the same contribution percentage that the county does now, and employees would have seen an increase, the annual increase of the county would be just over four-hundred-and-sixty thousand to stay with United Healthcare. Blue Cross gave us a really good option, as you know, the county was with Blue Cross a couple of years ago through the ACCG pool, and they do have that two-year rule where if you leave them, you can't come back for two years, and now it's been two years, so the county, they're welcoming you back, and, and they've given us the best option, I feel, in matching the benefits, and this is the twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible, eighty percent coinsure, all the way down the board, matching exactly what United Healthcare has on the table, they've got it down to a seven-point-two percent increase, which comes up to a hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar annual increase, if we, again, the county continues to contribute the same amount towards the employees' costs. If you're looking, that would be option one, that would be matching the same benefits. Option two is if you want to change the benefits with Blue Cross, this includes increasing the major, major change here will be increasing the out-of-pocket employees have now, right now, the annual out-of-pocket's four thousand dollars, under this option two, it would take that to sixty-six hundred dollars, so that's a big increase for, for an individual to have to pay out, if you made that change, and the other biggie is the two-hundred-dollar RX deductible on, on that plan, but with option two, that would actually keep the, if you kept the employee deductions the same, that actually would be a decrease for the county, but annually about, it's about a thousand dollars a month is what it would be, if you went with option two. And then option three is taking both of those plans and offering them, basically keeping one, the, the current plan where none of the benefits changed, and offering this plan I just talked about as dual option, and making it cost-neutral, meaning the county pays the same towards each plan, it doesn't matter which, which plan the employee goes with. If you go with that route, that's still in the exact same increase as option one, but what it really does is it gives employees a lower cost option on their paycheck, if they want to go with that little bit lower benefit plan, they can do that, it takes their deductions from currently sixty down to forty-two, and for the biggie is the hundred-and-sixty for family coverage, down to ninety-five. And those are the three options that after meeting Paul, Ola, and Amber, those are the three options we felt like were the best, that we wanted to present, I'm sure there's some questions about it.
Would it be, you say next Monday week or so, Tuesday week, the employees are going to have this option to decide upon, is that?
Actually, the, it'll be the educational meetings to tell them about the new benefit package for the 2016 plan.
At UALC.
At UALC.
Right, right.
And, you know, I'll keep going here, and the, the last page is really a good page to look at for you guys to kind of see all the numbers. Of course, Blue Cross presented a dental quote, a dental proposal, you were looking at just under a five percent increase with Meredith, and Blue Cross came in, and they're just about, they're about ten percent above current, so they're a little bit above where Meredith's renewal rates are, but Blue Cross and all these carriers do this, where they give you a, a package savings, a package discount, if you put more lines of coverage with them, so they gave us one-point-four percent off the medical premium by putting, if we put the dental with them, and again, the dental's voluntary, so to give you an idea, an employee would be paying, would be paying fourteen-twenty-seven with Meredith, it'd be fourteen-ninety-nine on paycheck for, for Blue Cross, but the savings to the county and the actual premium to county and employees, the annual savings is about forty-four thousand dollars by putting that down with Blue Cross, so even though it's a little bit higher. They did, Blue Cross did match on page seven, the vision offer, or the vision premiums, the plan is very similar to what you have now with IMed, again, this is voluntary, and the premiums would not change. On page eight, I know that last year, the county moved from Cigna to One America, and there were some savings there, you had a very low rate on your basic life, and the life insurance, the basic life is what the county provides to every single employee, and, and Blue Cross came very close to matching it. And they, and Blue Cross came very close to matching it, but they're a little bit above. As you can see, the annual premium currently with One America is just over eighty-six hundred. Blue Cross is just under, over ninety-six hundred. However, if you factor in the group long-term disability, and this is the county paid long-term disability, the, and you take both of those and combine them, Blue Cross is about sixteen hundred dollars less than where you're at right now with One America. So it'd be about sixteen hundred dollar annual savings. While the life is, is higher, the long-term disability is lower, so it equals out where it comes out lower. Page nine is simply showing you that they have matched the voluntary life and short-term disability rates with GGL, Greater Georgia Life, which is a Blue Cross company. They match what you have on books now for, with One America, so there'd be no change again to this voluntary product that's offered to employees. Page ten is the HRA and the FSA. As you know, the county provides a health reimbursement arrangement to employees for the last thousand dollars of their medical deductible. So once an employee spends fifteen hundred dollars, anything after that, they get reimbursed by the county. That is a self-administered, meaning the county administers that and reimburses employees. Blue Cross Blue Shield has a, a third-party administrator that they teamed up with a couple of years ago called Health Equity. And they have agreed to administer that plan for the county at no cost, starting in January, because your deductibles calendar year, so we wouldn't be able to start at the middle of the year. So for the remaining part of this year, we do as-is with the county self-administered with, with MSI's health. And then starting January one, using Health Equity as the HRA administrator at no cost. There's typically a three dollar ninety-nine cent charge per covered member, but they waived that. They've agreed to waive that. And then what they've also agreed to do is effective July first, take over the, and handle the FSA, the flexible spending account. And again, they've agreed to waive that fee as well. The benefit to Health Equity is an employee that has medical coverage here that uses their card. Because this is a Blue Cross company, they see the claim fees and you're not gonna get a letter from the third-party administrator at the TPA saying, hey, I need you to provide a receipt for that, what you, what you had done at that doctor's office. So they see that claim and it makes it a much smoother process for, for employees under the HRA and the FSA. On page eleven, I simply put some, some pluses on here for the Blue Cross proposal. One thing that's kind of nice is they are giving, they're guaranteed to give the county a seventeen thousand dollar wellness fund. And that is money that we can use towards the wellness program that Blue Cross will, will pay up to seventeen, reimburse the county up to seventeen thousand dollars, which in many different ways you can use that. Again, I talked about the discounts they provided, the one point four off if we put the dental and vision, the one percent off if disability, life and disability is moved. And those are included in the premiums you're looking at. The, of course, talking about discounts, Blue Cross Blue Shield's average discount in Waycross is fifty-four percent. You know, I don't have the average discount with United Healthcare, but I know that it's much lower than that. If you look at the state benefit plan, the state benefit plan, every, every employee covered under the state has an option between Blue Cross and United Healthcare. Even though they're the same exact benefits that the employees have, United Healthcare's about ten percent higher than Blue Cross, and I think that has to do with the discounts as well. So we, we, by the guess, it says there's about a ten percent, ten, eight, ten percent difference there. The other benefit is right now, with you having medical, dental and vision with three different carriers, that means there's three different ID cards and there's three different invoices. Combining them all to one means every employee that has medical, dental and vision has one ID card and also means the county's gonna get one invoice. I talked about the HRA and the FSA. They'll administer, of course, Cobra for all those lines. They're not gonna charge for the FSA. I'm not sure if I said that, but they're not gonna charge for the FSA administration. Disability claims integrated when you have your medical with the same carrier handling disability. Of course, the protection of the ACCG pool. And they've agreed to, the rates are guaranteed for two years for your disability life and your dental. Those, all those are guaranteed for two years, so never any change there. The last page is, page is just a summary to give you an idea. Your current, and I'll put the annual budget difference over here on the right if you have this. So the renewal, as I said, with United Healthcare would be about a four hundred sixty-one thousand dollar annual increase. Option one gets it down to a hundred and seventy thousand with a medical. Option two is a twelve thousand, almost thirteen thousand dollar savings. Option three is the same hundred and seventy, that's the dual option. And then if you look, I put on here the life and disability. If you go to the bottom, that's the pure number. Basically, option one is a seven percent increase and option two would be about half, point six percent decrease in annual cost that the county's spending. Whereas you started at a nineteen and a half percent increase, so everyone gets it down to that. United Healthcare have basically said they're, they are not, were not gonna come down any further than where they were at. So nineteen and a half percent was the best option on the table for them. I know I kind of went through that quickly, so any questions that might have?
United Healthcare have been losing value in the stock market, hasn't it?
I, yeah, I know that they're pulling out of the.
Out of the.
Exchange.
Right.
Yeah, the portable care.
How many, how many, what's the percentage of employees that sign up with a dental and vision?
We've got currently, the vision's one fifty-nine, the dental is one seventy-two. So pretty, you know, yeah, nice portion, but which we were looking at five percent and basically Blue Cross Blue Shield went nine. One of the things is too, when he was talking about the, the allowance and all on the vision side, there's a hundred and thirty dollar allowance versus a hundred and ten, and that renewal was basically flat.
Right, no change.
Before the county, the bottom line as far as the, the twelve thousand dollar savings, that that, what that does is the employees are gonna have to pay more in their deductibles and more in their premiums. I appreciate you sending that information. I did read it over the weekend, so I, not just because I didn't have my laptop, but I did read it all and looked at it, very information. But what option were you leaning towards, Ola?
That, really and truly, we had, we met and discussed this Thursday and looked at everything with Amber and, and Ola and all. And we were gonna let John make the suggestion for the option, I think, to keeping the benefits and contributions. And down here, if you look at the last, the last page in the spreadsheet, you know, somehow through the budget or something, we would just have to find and go with option one and go with the Blue Cross products. And, and you're saying option three?
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Dual option.
Yeah, the dual option, if you.
Oh, man, Doc, Doc, it sounded like he was basically saying that gives choice.
I mean, it gives you some flexibility and it gives everyone the coverage on the, on the dental and all this, the options to buy into it. And even though it's still a hundred and seventy add-on, yet at the end of the year though, they've been pretty, you know, we do, time to time, they, we get some, if you wanna call it redates or whatever the case may be.
That option is the dual option as he presented and to buy up or buy down for premium or whatever as an employee, option number three. We had all discussed option number one, keeping it the same. You've got some coding changes and stuff of that nature. It would be three coding changes during the open enrollment. I mean, it's a doable deal. It's up to the commission.
It is, I thought it was doable too, but, but the thing is, I, you know, until you really hear from the folks who are paying for it, you don't really, you know, to sit here and say, hey, I, you know, I prefer option one, two or three, they really need to be heard. I don't know how we go about doing that, Ola.
Well, when you have open enrollment, would you offer them the option three package and let them decide or if would the buy up?
Buy up. If, if we selected that option, but if we do not select that option, they will never hear about it.
We've made that choice for them.
Correct.
But if we do the option three, they do have, as he said, some flexibility.
They have flexibility.
And I think that's giving them a little bit of say in what they, you know, are getting.
How much option, how much trouble would it be to just send out to all the employees the information that we have? I mean, can't you just send all?
Yeah, we have about roughly three hundred employees on it and you're gonna get that many probably opinions. I mean, since you only have three options, we could go with the most, but being the timeframe that we're on, I would.
Well, we're matching benefits of what was already selected for them in option one. It's the same, it's a better formulary, which I think the bulk of the complaints have been formulary complaints. And prescription drugs looking at our, is twenty-five percent of our, and that's high for a plan, I think, John, and what he sees throughout all these other counties. We have always ER visits and formulary prescription drugs. We've always outpaced the pool, the ACCG pool and the norms.
And they, they encourage the preventive visits, correct?
Right.
In that, in that option?
It, it isn't, it is covered at no cost, right?
Right.
Anything prevents coverage.
Right.
That brings an question for why have we for years outpaced the pool? I mean, what are we?
Well, just in that setting, we may be lower in all definitively lower in other areas in certain things, let's say pulmonary or.
And the ER visits and prescription drugs, that's two of the most extensive.
And we've tried to, and, and we've had some, some of our plan holders say the provider is driving us to the ER. And we've worked with that. They're driving us to the ER. They're saying, we don't have that lab or, or they won't pay for the lab. It almost seems like the healthcare providers with not getting into a lengthy definitive answer, the healthcare providers and the education process from United, I'm just gonna use United singular, healthcare, seems like to me they're not educating the people that accept their insurance on the benefits of going point A, point B, point C. The easy option for them is to say, I don't provide that service or whatever. You need to go to convenient care or ER or whatever and you can get results, which is the higher option. And it seems, but guess who's paying the premium and the bill?
I'll tell you.
Or the claims history of getting counted against us from what the providers are driving are insured to do.
I've been to convenient care and I, I like convenient care. You know, I like Apple Care there. I love, I love the Apple Care, let me put it that way. That's where I.
Well, we got that as part of our plan. At one time, it was not an option for us and, and through HR, they worked hard to get that as an option, Apple Care, through one of our insured pools. So it is a highly.
What were you leaning toward?
John, what were you leaning toward? If, you know, I, I'd basically like to just put them forth and just make a decision. But if I were an employee and looking at this, what you, what you see here is you would see there's a hundred and twenty-four people that have at least a spouse or a child or both covered, working for the county. And right now, an employee is paying a hundred and one dollars to have a spouse or one child covered, or they're paying a hundred and fifty dollars a paycheck to have a full family covered. So if you tell me all of a sudden I could cover my family, my, my spouse for sixty-five dollars and my one child for sixty-five dollars, or my full family for ninety-five dollars, and I'm gonna save fifty-five dollars a paycheck, that's like getting a raise. And that's what.
That's a big raise.
That's what a lot of people, I think, would do that have, you know, I'll tell you, with, with Blue Cross, they said, we prefer them only have one plan. And the reason they prefer that is due to adverse collect, adverse selection. And so they say, well, all your young, healthy people that don't usually cover is gonna go with this plan and everybody else will stay on this plan. Well, we did the same thing with Sutter County last year. They offered one plan. I think forty percent of their people went to the lower plan. And this year, they got a one percent increase with Blue Cross. So I didn't see the claims change like they, they kind of predicted they would. So that's the only downfall, but even that, I don't think, you know, is a, is a big difference. Because what they say is, okay, your claims are your claims. If you, this means if everyone goes to this lower cost plan, then the premium Blue Cross is collecting is lower and that won't cover those claims if the people who stay on the better plan. But again, you know, it's, it's hard to say what's gonna happen next year, but that's the only thing I can say negative about it.
So option, option one sounds well.
Option one, you know, that's keeping it as-is basically. You see, you see a little bit of an increase.
Yeah, so.
This, this, think of option three really as option one is available, but you also have this other plan.
Well, that's the reason I said option three.
That would be my.
Option, option two is out because that's more out of pocket.
Exactly. I would definitely, I would say not go that way.
Well, we can't. Way more out of pocket.
If you'll look, it mirrors the other dual option that they could do anyway.
But they have a choice on.
That's right. And, and the choice is nice. It, it reflects on those more chances for mistakes at enrollment because you got more options, more counting mistakes that we could have through the assembly of information between the enrollers and our accounting department or payroll department. So it, as easy as it sounds, and I'm not saying one way or another, it's clearly your choice, but there are complexities that add to the equation for the buy-up. And we had talked about the buy-up later on. And just let me say this, as easy as a hundred and seventy thousand dollars sounds, we all know what we're facing. We had a one point nine percent margin for error in our budget this year and that's four hundred thousand. So at two hundred thousand, you're talking about taking your margin of error. If we absorb everything at one seventy, from basically one point nine percent to just say one percent is, is what you're really doing. And as easy as it sounds to absorb one seventy, which the option three both are reflective in that number, but one seventy in our budget and what we're looking at this year to keep everybody fully employed is a tough slant.
Well, let's say this.
It's a tough slant.
We, we want to save taxpayers money. That's what we, you know, get elected to do, but we also understand that the employees have not had pay raises in years. And for them, for us to go up on their deductibles and what have you is just not, that's not gonna fly. And we understand about trying to save taxpayers their money and we understand about busting the budget, but we have been pretty successful in the last few years of bringing this budget under control and being in the black for a long time. But now this is healthcare and we're not driving that cost. This cost is being driven by policies up in the federal government. Bottom line is, I think you're gonna give them, you give them a better option with less dollars taken out of their checks. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if, if option three does present that, your premium for employee would go to four, from sixty to forty-two, hundred to sixty-five, one sixty to ninety-five or whatever the difference there is. So it, it is an option.
And that's why we're hiring them to, to keep up with all the, all the numbers and account for all the, all the.
Give the employee an option.
I'm in favor of option three at this time.